Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Five yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item three. Approving Submittal of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's 2025 Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification to the U.S. Department of the Housing and Urban Development. Board Communication Number 25-304.
Move.
It's moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Five yes.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved in second, all in favor of voice. Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene in about two minutes for our regular city council meeting.
Has someone?
I'm sorry, what? He's on his way in.
Okay. Five, Des Moines City Council Meeting, please take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonson. Voss.
Here.
Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. At this time, we have on the consent agenda 4B withdrawn inspections incomplete. 4I added consideration of new 12-month Class C liquor license for Highland Underground at 3614 Sixth Avenue, sponsored by Mayor Bozen. Number 42 updated to continue hearing until September 8, 2025. Is there a motion?
So move.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Coleman, do you want to vote? Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item three, approving the consent agenda. Items three through 37, 4Y Coleman is a no, 5 Coleman and Voss are no's. 22 Coleman like to speak. 26 Coleman and Mandelbaum would like to speak. 27 Westergaard would like to speak. 28 Coleman would like to speak. 36, 37 Coleman would like to speak. And these are retained items and will be enacted by one rule call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests an item to be removed and considered separately. At this time, is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. We'll now go to the hearings. Item, item number 38, on vacation of portions of East 37th Street, East 38th Street, East Jefferson Avenue, and Williams Street right-of-way located in the Four Mile Creek floodplain and conveyance to Polk County Conservation Board with the Lower Four Mile Creek Greenway Project. A is first consideration of ordinance above. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minute per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak? See no one.
I would like to move items 38 and 38A in pursuant to 42A and like to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 39, on vacation of multiple segments of street and alley right-of-way in vicinity of 201 Southeast 7th Street for city stormwater and park improvements. A is first consideration of ordinance above. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Has anyone?
If there's no one wishing to speak, I'm happy to move item 39, 39A and pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 40, on vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way located east of and adjoining 715, 719, 723, and 729 Southwest 63rd Street in conveyance to D. Wright Properties LLC for $28,500. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. Anyone wishing to speak? If not, alternative to the council.
There's no one wishing to speak, I'll move item 40, 40A, and 40B.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 41, on request from Cynthia Ruiz Delgado owner and Jamie Sidikol Rubio Jr. owner to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of 2002 Indianola Avenue from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use and to rezone from N5 Neighborhood District to limited RX1 mixed-use district to allow reuse of an existing building for a barbershop shop. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant. It requires six votes. First, we'll have the parties in interest, applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned. They will be given five minutes to speak. Second would be Jermaine comments from the general public, two minute per person to speak, 20 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Don't see anyone.
Not hearing other comments from the public. I'd like to move 41, 41A, and 41B.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 42, on request from Jamie Villafano Navarro owner to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of 1824 Dean Avenue from low-density residential to industrial and to rezone from N3C Neighborhood District to limited I1 Industrial District to allow reuse of an existing building as a warehouse space for office and storage of vehicles and materials and to continue the hearing until September 8, 2025.
Item number 42.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
It's been approved to move the hearing. On item 43, conveyance of property interest to Polk County for the Iowa Confluence Water Trails Project and to continue the hearing until September 8, 2025.
Hearing no comments, I will move item number 43.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Item 44, on the issuance of not to exceed 38 million general obligation bonds, 30 minutes, $38 million. General obligation bonds or capital loan notes for essential corporate purposes. Council Communication Number 25-319. And A is the authorization for additional action. Again, Jermaine comments, two minutes per person to speak.
I'll move 40 and 4, 44A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. 45, on the issuance of not to exceed $33 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds or capital loan notes for essential corporate urban renewal purposes. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action. Again, Jermaine comments for two minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? If not?
Hearing none, I'll move 45 and 45A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 46, on the issuance of not to exceed $1,335,000 in general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-1. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action.
I'll move 46 and 46A. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. On item 47, on the issuance of not to exceed $1,335,000 in general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-2. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action.
I'll move item 47 and 47A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 48, on the issuance of not to exceed $1,335,000 in general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-3. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action.
I'll move 48 and 48A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 49, on the issuance of not to exceed $750,000 in general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-4. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action.
Move 49, 49A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 50, on the issuance of not to exceed $900,000 in general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-5. Council Communication Number 25-319. A is authorization for additional action.
I'll move 50 and 58.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. Item 51, on the issuance of not to exceed $1,335,000 general obligation bonds or capital loan notes for general corporate purposes, GCP-6. Council Communication Number 25-319. A authorization for additional action.
I'll move item 51 and 51A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. This item is 22, support of an amendment.
Item 52. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's not a hearing.
Oh, we have closed the hearings. The hearings are closed now, it is 5:12. So now, item 22. Support of an amendment to the final application for the Merle Hay Mall Campus reinvestment district. Council Communication Number 25-305, I believe Councilman Coleman would like to speak to this.
Thank you. I, I, I will move this with a request that when we forward our support that it includes a letter from the mayor or the manager who's ever, ever appropriate. I wanted to make a couple of comments. Our, our friend Liz, the mall owner, is here from the, where, from Chicago, I guess I'll say it. Liz has been a great friend of Des Moines. And as I think most of us know, for the last 50 years, the mall has been the highest-paying taxpayer, the mall and the properties around it in the city. And if not, not every year, but most years, number one. Last year, they had over $70 million worth of retail sales there. May, it makes it the third busiest shopping place in, in the state. And the, the, the third biggest mall or, or, or retail area behind Jordan Creek and the mall on the interstate in Corvill. Coral Ridge Mall was the name.
Yeah, right.
Like, to put that number in perspective, our, our sales tax is 7%. That's about $5 million that a thriving mall pours into services, government services, public services through the school's tax, through our tax, and through the state tax. And preserving that is fragile. And growing it is really, really hard. But we need to find ways to do that. There's, there's few promising areas like the Merle Hay corridor and the ownership that, that Liz and her team have at the mall. And I, I think that it's really important that we view this in two ways. What's the upside? How can we grow it? But also, how can we protect the current vitality that's there? And for those reasons, it's really important that we get this project to the finish line and that we help the mall and all of Des Moines that benefits from those taxes. I particularly want to do everything that we can to make sure that people that want to shop, to buy clothes, to buy gifts, to buy sporting goods, whatever it is, can do it here than in Dallas County. And I think it's our job to make sure that we give people those opportunities and options. They have built a strong group of partners at the mall going forward. You probably read some of this in the paper because it got some coverage, but the Drake University Hockey Team, the Iowa Demon Hawks. Carolyn is here, thank you. That's professional indoor soccer for men and women. The National, National League Volleyball, a training facility for youth and collegiate professional level sports are all planned to be there. And that not only will be a draw and create additional revenues, but it will stabilize the rest of the mall and help those shops grow. And so for that reason, I think that the last lap of our negotiations with the state has to be assertive and very optimistic about the impact that this will have on the city. And so I would like a letter that kind of talks about the, the profound impact that it has. The study has had some attention because most of us think that the impact on the mall will be greater than the study says it will be because of how at risk we are, that it, that it take a step backwards without new, without new life. And so I want a letter, I hope that can forward to it, that says we're at the very optimistic end beyond the, the, the study. And it's important to us in ways that we don't measure today because we're trying to solidify this $70 million worth of retail base that we have already. So thank you for making those comments. Liz, thank you for being here. Carolyn, thanks for being here. I probably don't know very many answers to questions, but if you have some, I'm sure they'd answer.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sir.
Liz, thank you for coming. I had the privilege of working with your grandfather when I was a 20-something.
Nice.
At the mall. And it says something when a prized property like this is still in the family. And we appreciate your interest in continuing to invest in Des Moines. Thank you.
Mayor Bozen, I like to add just one quick comment. And it's, with a lot of pride, we're working on this with the city of Urbandale. And I think it's so keen that we're doing this in tandem with another community. Obviously, a part of the mall is in Des Moines, part, oh, Polk County also. Thank you. So anyway.
Thank you for saying that.
It's good to collaborate.
That was in my notes, and I skipped it. So thank you, Carl.
I will be happy to send a letter, whether it's Scott or myself. I believe, you know, I, having been at Yonkers for as long, I have said over and over that this is the one mall that has done everything they can to reinvent themselves. First, it was an outdoor mall, enclosed mall, and then we know what's happened with retail. And it's a critical element of, when we talk about economic development, which we talked about this morning, this is a critical element to Des Moines and to come up with innovative ways to make it even more relevant than it maybe was and more opportunity, I think, is a testament to Liz and her team that run the mall and the work that they have done to try to bring newness to a, you know, an area that really needs that type of retail business. So I appreciate the work and the effort. It's not easy. None of these projects are easy, but this is one that I think is critical to Des Moines and is that impactful. So we'll be happy to write a letter of support for that. So with that, any other comments?
I think Chris moved it.
Yes.
So I will be pleased to second that one.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 26, and we have Councilman Coleman and Councilman Mandelbaum who would like to speak.
I'm glad.
Oh, we, okay. Well, let me read it first, and then we'll have you come up, Carol. Number 26 is donation agreement with Carol Maher and the Des Moines Park and Recreation Foundation, being businesses Friends of Des Moines Parks for funding a bicycle rack installation project. Council Communication Number 25-313. We have someone who would like to speak on this.
Mayor Bozen and members of the Des Moines City Council, my name is Carol Maher, and I live downtown in Ward III. It all started with Iowa girls' state soccer. Shortly after I moved here during the pandemic, my high school alma mater, the Davenport Assumption Knights, were in the girls' state title game at County Soccer Park. I pedaled down to the game, primarily on trails, feeling superior as I whizzed by the line of cars waiting to park in the lot. But once I got inside, I couldn't find a place to lock my bike. So I stood alongside the sideline next to my bike, cheering the Knights to victory. As I do, I sent an email to the Parks Department asking where the racks were at the park, as I couldn't find any. "Oh, they're there, you just weren't looking in the right place." Okay. Eventually, though, I was told, whoops, you were right, we don't have any racks there. And guess what? The next year, when the Knights were again in the state championship, I enthusiastically parked at one of the 12 racks provided. It felt kind of cool. That was three years ago. Since then, I kept asking about other parks that didn't have racks, Drake Park, the Birdland Pool, Ding Darling Shelter, Riverview, McCray Park. I even volunteered to go to all 77 parks and complete an inventory. I showed up at open houses, making sure racks were included. Yes, like you, they were tired of me. But I didn't give up. I started Ride On Des Moines in May, an advocacy effort focused on more bike lanes, more bike racks, and fewer bike lane obstructions. Reaching out to the fabulous Sarah Lohmeyer of Friends of the Des Moines Parks made all the difference. Since December 2024, I've been working with Sarah and Derek Hansen, a planner from Parks and Rack. Derek pulled in Jeff Wiggins, who helped with the inventory tracking database he had built for racks throughout the city. Derek and his fellow planners, planners determined there were three, the parks were 341 racks short. The good news is that their CIP guidelines have been updated to include racks whenever new parks are added or refreshed. The other good news is that Ride On decided to pony up for 140 new rack installations at 23 parks across the city in all the wards. Fingers crossed, you'll start to see these racks in the fall and over the next couple of years. I hope this gift will encourage employers, landlords, special event organizers, and retailers to consider parking as more than concrete spaces for vehicles. Providing bike racks at our award-winning parks is a great place to start. And thank you to Councilmember Westergaard, who gave me this really cool coin. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to.
Josh should go first.
Well, I just wanted to, to speak. One, this is a tremendous donation, but I, I also wanted to talk a little bit about, about Carol because she's one of the folks who pushes us to do this job better every single meeting. And I, I for one will never, never get sick of a constituent who comes to the meeting looking at how they can make this community better. And one of the most important things that we can do to make this community better is to make a more accessible community. A community that, no matter who you are or how you're getting around, you can get to the things that you need to, to make life work, but you can also get to the things that make life, life great, like our parks. And this is a, a great example of making, we're making parks all across our city better and more accessible because people will be able to safely park their bikes and safely get to these parks by biking. That's a more accessible community, that's a community that works better for more people. And that's the type of input that Carol gives us in big and little ways at almost every single meeting. And i- if we had more folks who are as engaged and as willing to advocate, because it's not easy to advocate, you know, sometimes things are too far along in the process, just didn't have the dollars in that particular project, and change comes slowly. But persistence and, and being willing to give of yourself pays dividends. And Carol, you are making a great impact with this donation, but you also make a great impact by showing up, by providing great feedback, feedback that we need to hear, and by being a model that I hope other community members will emulate going forward. So thanks for this great work, and I look forward to, to riding, riding with you and taking advantage of this infrastructure. And I'm happy to move item 26, and I'll let Councilmember Coleman second it.
I'll, I'll second it, Josh.
I'll, I'll second it, Josh. Sometimes these come up and on the consent agenda and don't get any fanfare, and I just wanted to make sure you got recognized. Thank you. It is great, and I think Josh articulated it really well.
Thank you. That's a great donation and something that's needed, it sounds like. With that, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Item 27 is the receipt of the 2024 Annual Report of the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation as required by agreement. Councilman Westergaard, please.
Thank you, yes. Do we have that annual report? I thought everybody was going to get a copy of it at the meeting. Did we get it?
Well, it was in the...
In our box?
No. I didn't know you wanted me to print it out, but it was, it's like attached on the...
Okay, I did get that. I didn't know if we had...
Hard copy.
Nobody gave me hard copies.
Okay, okay. Well, I, it's another shout out for all the great work that people are doing in our community. The Public Art Foundation is there to work with the city to determine what's public art and what could be advertising. So they are, they work together with our city. But in addition to that, they have a tremendous board of directors that are fantastic at raising money. And this is not public money. These are private donations that they seek. But we have received millions and millions of dollars' worth of public art in our community because of the work that the Public Art Foundation does. And I just wanted to give them a shout out and to acknowledge them. You know, we have an airport project, and I believe they've raised $9 million for, for the artwork that will be in, at our, at our airport that everybody can enjoy. And we have public art that is scattered throughout this entire city that's there for free for people to come and enjoy. So I, I just wanted to personally thank the Public Art Foundation and all of their members that really work hard to raise so much money for our city. Thank you. And with that, I will move item 27.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Item 28 is the abatement of public nuisance at 1056th Avenue.
Sorry, I pulled that. I had questions that, that I got to.
You got it.
I'll move 28.
Okay. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six yes.
Motion carried. Next item is 36, amending the franchise fee in Section 6 here to 4 granted to the Iowa Power and Light Company, predecessor and interest in American Energy Company.
I'd like to make a motion that we delay action on this for at least 60 days until we can have an understanding of the reimagine DART process, continue the discussions that the manager started on funding formula and a governance model.
I'll second that motion.
May I make a comment? I do not support this motion. We have been discussing this franchise fee. I've been on council for a little over a year since before then. We recognize that with the budget constraints that we have, that we are going to have to utilize the franchise fee. I'd like to advance it, and therefore I am voting no.
Mayor, could I make some comments?
Yes.
I have some paperwork that I'll, I'll share with everybody. Can I put them on the screen?
Pass it.
Any chance you can email that? Councilmember Coleman or...
Photo and text.
How many pages is it?
I'll, I'll go through them quickly. I, I would, I have a copy, Laura, that I'd like to move to receive and file.
Well, there's lots of pages there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I mean, for sure, tonight is one of the most important votes that's been cast in the 27 years since I first announced I was running for office. And I, I think we are, I think like most things, there are good ideas and there are bad times to do them. What's up front is the recommendation of the manager in February, that he get, he be given a green light to begin negotiations, to come back. And as you've seen, I took this exactly from the blue letter and the roll call from February. And it was, it was covered pretty extensively. It says that, that we should take up the franchise fee, including recommendations on conditions or qualifications for the funds. The city manager and city attorney are directed to work towards an understanding with DART regarding its reimagining of DART services, its funding formula, and governance model, all of which should be agreeable to the council. It was covered pretty good. This is a story from the Register. I gave it to you. This is the meeting in which six of us agreed that we shouldn't take it up until we have an understanding and an agreement on those. And publicly, and that was public. This is important because, I shared this before, and I won't go through with it, but it's an important baseline for some of the information I'm going to share with you. We are being asked to increase our rates substantially, and as I, I showed you a couple weeks ago, most of the money over a two-year period, 75% of it, will not go to DART services. Mike, you make a really important point. DART needs our money. We need to find a way to fill the gap, but it should, we should not raise taxes on people in Des Moines to give tax cuts to people in the suburbs. 75% of this is going to tax cuts in various communities to accommodate a funding formula that's flawed, that the council never took up. As a result, we are going to perpetuate that funding formula that's bad. By the way, let me give you, well, I'll, I'll do that in a minute. The reason I share this with you is there's a couple of things that are important in state law. This is, this is Chapter 364.2, and it's about the franchises. On the second page, I've highlighted it for you. It, it, it says that in order to do this, the city must publish and provide a revenue, a revenue purpose statement. It, it gives definition about how it should be written, what it should include, where it should be published. I, I've asked for that, and I was told that we don't have it and that, that it may not be necessary. If you read that, I think you'll see serious concerns about the public notice of what, what we're embarking on. I would also say that in Section 384.12, there is a lot of information on the difference between raising a fee or amending the franchise fee. We are amending it because there's a new section of law that was not created when we passed it originally. And it says that a public referendum should happen in those cases. And if not a public referendum, we should give time for the citizens to file and have a reverse referendum. In fact, the very action that we're passing tonight, the materials in the packet say that the council would give the citizens a period of time. Unfortunately, it says only until 2014, or, or somewhere in there. We've updated part of the ordinance that allows for the franchise fee, but we missed significant portions of it. If you, if you read that, you'll see. This is another section from 3, 384. I'm going to turn it over because this is the part of the ordinance that I have the most problems with and the piece that I think will be most concerning in terms of legal disputes over it. And I bring this up, I think everybody realizes this. We've, we've raised this fee only one time from the council table. As a result, the city had a $40 million verdict against the city. It took a decade to work through legislation and paint it back off, and, and eventually a referendum of the people. The people supported it. This says that the regional transit levy can only consume 95 cents. And it says a, a combined amount, an aggregate amount of all taxes. I think there's serious concerns whether the legislation as written even allows for Thank you. I'll come back to that. This is 28 point... 28 and .5. It, it uses the term aggregate of all taxes levied. I, I think there's a serious concern about this. I've raised it before. I raised it again with city management last week and a couple of weeks ago. I, I think we need to ensure before we go forward with this that we have, that we've considered all these legal aspects. That's a real question to me, whether or not, whether or not we're doing this in a legal way. Again, not a bad idea. In February, I supported this. If these things could be answered and if we had an adequate revenue purpose statement that's required to be published. We don't have it because DART's process is not done. Scott has not had time or success in negotiating governance and a funding formula. Aggregate. They use the term aggregate on purpose. It says the, a whole formed of combining several typical desperate, disparate elements. I think the franchise fee, the levy, the other funds that we give to DART clearly exceed 95 cents. And it, it's, it's concerning to me. There are a number of, oh, I wanted to go back to one other thing. The final thing that I, I'd like to point out, Josh, again from 384.3, this one is, is it, is it talks about the current new law that is there. And it says that these can be used, and I'm going to the bolded, solely for the reduction of property tax levies that support the operation and maintenance of a municipal transit or regional transit district, or to maintain transportation service levels. We know going into this, we are not maintaining service levels. We know there's going to be a proposal after we vote on this and award the money to DART that service cuts are coming. We're not maintaining it. I point all this...
Chris, may I just interject?
Yeah.
The operative terms here are or, not in. So for this statement to be true, any one or more of these items have to be true.
I, I think, I think there would be commas in there, and I think it's worth having additional legal discussion about that. They choose not to have any commas in there, and, and I think that's instructive to people that I've talked about. And it's a case where commas probably would have helped to clarify the position you're saying, or, or an adverse consideration that people might have. There are a number of, of these things that I think continue to spell concern for me. I would also say it should concern each of us. This is coming forward without a recommendation from the manager. Normally, we're protected because we don't get information, we have the benefit of professional recommendations. We don't, Scott, I don't think you're recommending this move forward at this time.
So I've had the conversation privately with, with all the council. There are a lot of different choices, and there are other variables that we don't have the final answer for. But frankly, it is up to each individual council member to decide if they have enough information such that they're comfortable.
When we started the reimagine, I believe we said we would commit to the three years, right? At some point, this franchise fee covers...
I believe it's two years.
Or two years, whatever. But we will not get there without, right? So we're saying...
Yes, without the franchise.
So we're saying this franchise fee is based on the time now to start accumulating the dollars, but that we have asked and the full commission understood when we talked at our last DART meeting that we would do so, but based on when we get the final plan, we would be looking at governance and the funding formula. This does not mean this franchise fee is 100% forever, or five, I think it's five years right now, but it will be up to us. But we know to try to stabilize transit. So I guess the question is, if you want to try to stabilize the transit, even though we're going to reduce it, we know that reduction is coming, that's our choice. I know the vote that was taken a few years ago. People don't like the funding formula, how it's worked out. We have the highest ridership of any community. We also have the most need. And unfortunately, the legislative body selected any city over 200,000, and we are the only one. So the, it's been put back to us. So we, as a council, have to decide, are we willing to try to stabilize it and make sure we've committed to our time that we said we would, or we not?
My comment is, is that I think there's a pretty impressive list of people that were on the reimagine DART consultants, that consulted, that met. And I reached out to several people, and a couple of people just laughed at. And they said, the only thing we were given was a reimagine DART, you get this choice or this choice. Which do you want? It was, there was never discussion about what are we going to do to be sustainable? And that's what this has always been about for me. Even if we, even if we did the franchise fee and everything, we all voted for it, it's not sustainable because we still haven't heard from DART about what they're going to do to live within their budget. I've been on council for 10 years now, and since day one, we've been asking for that. And, and I've, I've not, we've never, we've never received that. I also reached out to other people's answers were, well, my name's on there, but there really wasn't, yeah, they put my name on there, but I didn't have any active participation. So I, you know, I don't know what that means. I wasn't involved in the meeting, so I, I have no idea. But to raise people's taxes without more discussion just doesn't, I represent those that elected me, and I, I just don't think that it's the right thing to do. Until we have more information, that's why I'm, I seconded Chris's motion, I would like to see some real numbers about what are we really going to do to, to make DART sustainable.
Numbers have been presented, and the people that chose to participate in the reimagine, if they didn't feel they got something out of it, then they possibly didn't participate as much as they could have. I mean, there was numerous meetings, numerous opportunity for feedback. There isn't a transit system probably in the U.S. that doesn't have financial issues. I was just at a conference, and there, everybody's in the same boat. This is public transportation for many people who have no other source of transportation, many of it being our paratransit, which is a very expensive service to use. So I believe we had said we would commit. We are going to be looking at the final plans of reimagine. We are cutting back. Everybody is, there's, to be sustainable for any of us right now is unknown, and in most cases, it involves reduction. The ridership model has shown that you get more ridership. Hopefully, with more ridership, you will get more revenue. So it's a matter of, do you want public transportation? And again, going forward, I believe that any vote that a DART commissioner makes, it needs to have full vote of our council when it commits to a financial, and that maybe wasn't done in the previous years. But going forward, I think it needs to be done so that we all have a clear understanding and we're not all second guessing on this shouldn't have been done, that should have been done. We are a regional entity. We are not alone. And we have, like I said, the greater ridership and the people that need it the most.
I would even vote for the franchise fee if we reduced the 95 cents down.
Well, at this time... Yes.
May I? I, so I, I don't, I don't support...
So I don't support delaying this. And, you know, this is the third vote, so we've had opportunities to discuss this, and we also started the conversation in May, although maybe not with the clarity that Councilmember Coleman brought to this at this point. But I am concerned about the delay. You know, when we did this in February with our, and we did commit, even prior to February, that we would be providing, the city would be providing dollars in the, to DART, including this fiscal year. When we passed our budget this year, the only way that the dollars that the city had already committed to could come would be from the franchise fee. But, you know, the other piece that I've heard is about long-term sustainability. And we're voting for the franchise fee now, but every month that we delay, the franchise fee is about half a million dollars that could have been put in reserve for transit service. And DART is working through the reimagine process. It is, they've asked for, big piece of it was ridership versus coverage as a model. That's a big decision point. And then, from a ridership or coverage model, it's scalable, based on the resources that you have. But that big question, it's an important one, and one that we hadn't addressed as a community. And I thought the mayor, the executive committee of DART, and that commission did a great job in leading us through that process and getting robust public input on that piece of the question. And then going forward with this broader question. Now, we know at the end of it, there's still decisions to be made, but we know some things about this. As the mayor pointed out, we know that the vast majority of the ridership is from Des Moines, 78%. We also know that the folks who use DART really need DART. 61% of the riders don't have a driver's license. 61% don't have any working vehicles in their household. An additional 25% only have one working vehicle in their household. We also know that 57% are for people going to and from work. And the people who are working are people who are struggling to make ends meet. 43% of DART riders come from a household that has $20,000 or less in household income. An additional 21% have household income under $30,000. So that's almost 65% that have household income under 60, or under $30,000. 64% household income under $30,000. You take away the way that they get to work, and they're in even more dire straits. So we know that we need this service. We know our residents are the most impacted by this service. And we know that every bit of delay means that we're going to have to cut further down the line, cut more of that service. That is ultimately what delay is about. It is making it harder to be sustainable, because that is the implication. We can hold dollars in reserve to make sure they're spent in ways that we approve, but we can't get dollars that we haven't collected or haven't authorized to be collected. And when we delay, we don't get those dollars, and the alternative to dollars to fund the service is to cut the service. And that's what I, you know, it's not an easy choice. No one likes to raise any tax or any fee. You don't like to do that. But the service is just too important. The folks who rely on it, it's too important to them, and I don't want to cut any more of that service than we absolutely have to. And so I want us to move forward with the franchise fee. And I trust the mayor as our representative on the commission. I think she's done a great job as our DART commissioner in a very difficult situation, because it is tenuous. You know, when you talk about part of what we are, part of the gap that we are filling, we've lost communities because they think Des Moines is getting too much. It's our residents, and they don't care about the service because it's our residents who use it. It's a difficult situation that the mayor is navigating very well, and I trust her to continue working through the reimagine process. I know she's advocated and pushed on exactly the issues that Councilmember Coleman has raised, and I know she'll continue to be an advocate for Des Moines, as well as the needs of our residents and the residents who rely on this. So I'm willing to go forward with this. I don't think this is the end of the discussion, but I think this is an important step that we need to take.
So we have a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table to delay in a second. So we need to vote on, do you want to delay it or not?
So I vote no on delay.
Two yes, four no.
Motion does not carry on item 36.
So the motion would be to approve item 37.
36, or 37, sorry.
Where are we? 36. Okay. It says 37 in front of us here, but...
Are you making the motion?
Yes, I moved it.
I will second it. Mayor, if I may ask a question of legal...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna...
Chris raised some points, and I want to make sure that if this passes, that we are doing it according to the letter of the law. I'm putting our legal counsel on the spot here. Chris provided passage, I'm not an attorney.
Me neither.
From something that was passed over a decade ago, and referenced a year that is long past, other things, has legal reviewed the items that Chris has made mention of? Do you feel confident that if we pass this, we're within the law?
Legal reviewed the amendments, drafted the amendments and submitted them. Be happy to give you any detail in a written opinion if you'd like, but I've reviewed this, and it matches with the requirements that the state requires.
That's good enough for me. Thank you.
Is that based on the new legislation?
Yes, based on the specific legislation that addresses this specific increase.
And I will point out one other thing. Chris mentioned that when we first voted on this or discussed it some time ago, times have also changed. We are now working under a 2% cap. I'm really concerned about our continued limited ability to fund essential services. And this is, the franchise fee is a tool that the city of Des Moines, and only the city of Des Moines has in this state, is my understanding, to enact this franchise fee to help pay for a very vital service in the city of Des Moines. I'm going to sound like a broken wrecker, but when I ran, I had 74 gatherings in seven and a half weeks, and DART was at the top of the three items that were of greatest concern to the people throughout the city where I met. I am confident that this is a very important item to the people of Des Moines.
Thank you.
Can I make one other comment, please? I'm sorry. I want to, I've been to most of the DART board meetings. I followed this. I want this to work. I think it is a bad time. Fundamental to my belief is that we're assuming that this whole 2.5 cent increase, the $40 million, is going to be spent on DART. I'm concerned about essential services, too. And I think inherent in the manager's support for a delay is because he'd like to bring back the kind of cost it's going to take for fire stations, fire personnel. I think he will tell you that voting yes on this tonight is going to cause a property tax increase. That's on the heels of us raising the sewer tax, the stormwater tax. We have a referendum for schools. We've just raised this tax, or about to, it looks like, if I'm counting votes right, $40 million. We're going to have to then layer on probably the largest tax in property taxes that we've had in Des Moines to just maintain basic services. And we all gave lip service two weeks ago to the fire department and others that need funds, and the manager would like time to sort all those priorities and make it work together.
Hey, I appreciate that, but we've known about the fire stations for a long time. This isn't something new that just came up. You know, we've known ladder eight. We've known that we need coverage. So I appreciate, we're getting pressures on all fronts. The biggest issue is what we have had happen to us from the legislature, and we have got to work to do that, to provide the essential services. So I see, I appreciate that we have a fire station issue, we have police issues, we have road issues, we have sidewalk issues. Everything's under pressure.
We have a singular opportunity to support our transit system.
And this was the one tool that our legislature gave us singly, because I guess they just hold this out as special. But, yeah, so nothing's easy right now, and we know there's a lot of issues. And we're hoping with the finalization, we will be looking at governance, and as I said, we are committed to looking at the funding formula. And with that, it's been moved.
In second.
Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Four yes, two no.
Motion carries. Item 37 is amending the franchise fee in Section 6 here to four, granted to the Midwest Gas Company predecessor in interest to Mid-American Energy Company.
Well, I'd be happy to move item 37. I guess I tried to move item 37 before, but...
Second.
Been moved in second. Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Four yes, two no.
Motion carries. That takes us to... Item 52 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 25-308. A is parking modifications, Forest Avenue between 27th Street and 37th, 30th Street. B is parking modifications, Third Street between Vine Street to Court Avenue. C is designation as a one-way street, Raccoon Street from Southeast Sixth Street to Southeast Seventh Street. D is code corrections and parking modifications. WRA Ingersoll Run Sewer Outlet, Phase 28, Section 2. One, Seventh Street between Locust Street and Ingersoll Avenue. Two is 18th Street, I'm sorry, the first one was 17th Street. 18th Street between Grand Avenue and Ingersoll Avenue. And three is Locust Street between 13th Street and Flora Drive. Four is Grand Avenue between 12th Street and 28th Street. Anybody like to approve this?
If there are no comments...
I'm happy. Oh, go ahead, Carl.
If there are no comments, I'll move 52, 52A, 52B, 52C, 52D, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And let's see, do we need an item to waive the second and third reading according to...
42A.
No, or yes, Tom?
If you want.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved in second.
Did you ask for a waiver?
Yes, yes, I did.
Pursuant to Rule 42A.
42A.
Okay. Been moved in second. Please vote.
Mandelbaum votes yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 53. We have no one that's signed up, so with that, I believe we have covered everything, and I will, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move second. At this point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandelbaum.
Thank you.